Housing Agency Governing Board Meeting, and I'll ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the City of Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's submittal of the Housing Choice Voucher Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinator, grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars, Board Communication Number 12-172. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this? Seeing no one, could we have a motion to approve?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The item passes. Item three is approving the Des Moines Municipal Housing Payment Standards Recommendation, Board Communication Number 12-170. Anyone in the audience want to speak regarding approving the payment standards recommendation? Seeing none, could we have a motion on that item?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Item passes. Item four is approving the City of Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency One-Year Agency Plan, Board Communication Number 12-165. Is there anybody in the audience to comment on approving of that one-year agency plan? Seeing none, could we have a motion on that item?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? Kristi, any of your guys have any thoughts about this?
Do you guys have any comments?
No comments, all right.
I think they'll abstain on this one.
They're gonna abstain, all right. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Item passes. Last item is a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Been moved, and I think it's gonna pass by acclamation. We will convene the City Council meeting in a moment. This meeting is adjourned. Okay.
Okay, here's some stuff they've just handed around here.
All right, we have a couple of things that we would like to present. We have a proclamation, and we have a representative here. Casanka? Casantros?
Chrisanka, Chrisanka.
Okay, could you come forward and let's talk about Parkinson's Disease?
Sure.
And we've got a proclamation to follow up regarding Parkinson's Awareness.
Yes.
Brian, your turn.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Chrisanka, Chrisidas. I'm the coordinator for the Iowa Parkinson's Disease Information and Referral Center, which is funded by the American Parkinson's Disease Association, for which there is an Iowa chapter. My office is located at Iowa Health, and as the coordinator, I do many things throughout the year, including educational events, informational meetings. Our biggest being our conference that is held in June in West Des Moines, which is for people with Parkinson's and their family members. We don't have an exact number for how many people in the state of Iowa have Parkinson's, but it is one of the states with a higher incidence of Parkinson's Disease. So it's definitely a need for educational information and awareness in the state of Iowa. April is Parkinson's Awareness Month, and so we're just trying to do a lot of awareness in regards to Parkinson's, and which is why today I wanted to get a proclamation read by the City of Des Moines. So if you ever have any questions about Parkinson's, anything related to it, feel free to Google Iowa Parkinson's Disease, and you'll bound to be come upon the website, which is APDAIowa.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrisanka. And there's a lot of us, I know even in this audience, that have had family members and friends that have been struck by this disease, and certainly the awareness of it and all the work that needs to be done to fight for a cure, I think is so important, but I think awareness comes first, and so we appreciate your coming down, Chrisanka. So proclamation reads, "Whereas Parkinson's Disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder of the central nervous system, which has a unique impact on each patient, and whereas according to Parkinson's Action Network, the Parkinson's Disease Foundation, the National Parkinson's Foundation, the American Parkinson's Disease Association, and the National Institute of Health, there are over one million Americans diagnosed with Parkinson's Disease. And whereas symptoms include slowness, tremor, difficulty with balance and speaking, rigidity, cognitive and memory problems, and whereas although new medicines and therapies may enhance life for some time for people with Parkinson's, more work is needed for a cure. And whereas increased education and research are needed to help find more effective treatments with fewer side effects, and ultimately a cure for Parkinson's Disease, and whereas a multidisciplinary approach to Parkinson's Disease care includes local wellness, support, caregiver groups, and whereas April has been proclaimed as a worldwide Parkinson's Awareness Month for all to recognize the need for more research and help in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's Disease. Now therefore I, the Mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of Des Moines City Council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Parkinson's Awareness Month, and hope that everyone will begin to recognize this disease, and thank you so much for your support." Let's give her a great hand. Eyes over. All right, we'll start our City Council meeting shortly.
Well, somehow it must be the place to fix it.
Of course, I've got all these steps, my knees are up here against it, my feet are up on the legs, I can control how far I can tilt them.
Extra item.
Giving you enough.
Prior to starting this evening's meeting, we're gonna have a word from our own City Council member, Skip Moore, and those who would like to participate with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time, please.
This is a poem from Jesse Bernheisel titled "A Dream Realized." Sometimes God bids us take a step, sometimes he bids us stay, but whether it be go or wait, he leads us every day. For many years our thoughts have turned towards some expansion plan, but never could we see the goal as well as now we can. The way is clear, the privilege ours, let not retard the thrill. It comes with leading souls to do, our blessed master's will. Thank you.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order, and we'll ask clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, and just for reference, we will ask that everybody turn off their phones so it is not disruptive to the meeting and hopefully is not picked up in our sound system and goes on record. We'll try to keep the meeting going. Item number two is approving the agenda as presented and/or amended. Could we have a motion?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. This evening, we're gonna ask for item three, which is approving the consent agenda tonight, items three through thirty-four. And of those items, item five, Councilmember Meyer votes no. Councilmember Mahaffey wishes to speak. Item six, Councilmembers County and Moore vote no. Item nine, Councilmember Hensley wishes to speak. Items ten and fourteen, Councilmember Moore wishes to speak. Item twenty-six, Councilmember Moore votes no. And item thirty-four, Councilmember Moore wishes to speak. Are there any other items that anyone would like to pull for further discussion or clarification as these items will be voted on in a single vote unless somebody either from the audience or as the items I just mentioned a minute ago are pulled for further discussion or clarification?
Mayor, I want to withdraw my request on ten. They answered my question.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be listed as voting no on four A.
No on four A.
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing none, the ballot has been moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Item passes. That takes us now to item five. Item five is consideration of a Class E liquor license renewal for Fast Mart at 1401 Buchanan Avenue. Councilmember Mahaffey.
Okay, as we all know, Fast Mart had previously been identified as the oasis. We have had numerous problems up there, and we had asked the police department to work out a plan with them. They have, and I thank them for their efforts, and I think that's a, in talking with the police chief, she thinks it'll be a vast improvement on that. But I just don't think that it's in the right location. I think it's too close to too many schools over there, and I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna move to deny a liquor license.
Brian?
I want to echo those sentiments. I appreciate the police department's work on this, but there's been too many problems for too long, and to give them another shot at a liquor license, I think would be, it's just, we're waiting for more bad things to happen there, and if we don't stop it now, then there's gonna be more problems in the future. So I, too, have a no.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I echo the sentiments here, and this has been an ongoing history of problems with that, and I do respect what the police department has tried to do, but I guess from where I'm at, at the City Council table, I think that the city needs to be much more aggressive in dealing with these issues. We've got a couple of other items on the council agenda tonight, and enough is enough. It does too much damage to the neighborhoods, we've made too much investment in these neighborhoods, and to have one or two incidents that can completely derail and be a major issue for us, I'm not gonna go that direction anymore. So I'm gonna vote no as well.
Any other comments?
I've been over.
I will also say that I received today also some concerns from the Des Moines Independent School District. They also have concerns over 3,000 students within a very short radius of that particular location, and I think I echo the concerns that everybody else has echoed so far at this table, and I am also gonna vote no.
If there's no other comments, I don't know if anybody else wants to comment, but I'll make the motion, Bob, unless you want to.
He voted, he made one.
I think Bob did.
Oh, you already did?
To deny.
Sorry about that.
Okay, the motion is to deny.
Seven yes?
All right. That license is denied. We move to item nine. Item nine is approving the agreement with Principal Life Insurance Company for the construction and funding of the 2012 Riverwalk Improvements. Council Communication Number 12-151. A is approving the supplemental agreement number one to the 2012 Riverwalk Improvements Professional Services Agreement with Stanley Consultants, Inc., to provide construction phase services not to exceed $57,000. Council Communication Number 12-161. Mrs. Hensley.
I asked to speak on this because I think this is a significant milestone in this project, the Principal Riverwalk project. They're coming in with an additional $3.5 million. The project will be finished the end of 2012, which is wonderful, and I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of it, and more so within the community, that this is a significant project that will be coming to a conclusion. So kudos to Principal Financial Group for stepping up and their willingness to put in the final dollars as a result of us running into some issues at the federal level. So I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that. I will go ahead and move item number nine.
And if it hadn't been for them, we probably wouldn't have got started in the first place on the Riverwalk.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yep.
Seven yes?
Item fourteen is accepting a completed construction and approving the final payment for the following. A is the Pleasant Drive Bridge over the Cummins Creek. Herberger Construction Company, Inc. And B is the University Storm sewer, 42nd Street to 43rd Street Synergy Contracting, LLC. Councilmember Moore.
Well, my comments tonight are on 14A. I noticed in the, what we're paying for here is there were numerous change orders at the end. One was on Southeast 30th Street, one's on Southeast 45th Street, one was on FLUR, and I'm wondering how change orders on a bridge on Pleasant Street end up on those. And then I want a little short discussion on the modular block retaining wall and lighting underneath the bridge. I was wondering if this is the new standard that we're gonna follow.
Does anyone have to speak to that, Ms. Mayor?
Mayor and Council, we'll have Jeb Brewer from the Engineering Department, he's come up and address your questions.
Mayor, Members of Council, Jeb Brewer, City Engineer. On the modular block wall and lighting, I can get back to you on that. I don't know if it's a particular standard. I know we did on that particular bridge install LED lighting underneath the bridge. Kind of one of our first times we've been doing that for underbridge lighting. Don't know on the particular modular block walls, we use a different, number of different types around the city of block walls. Those were the larger blocks.
Will it be similar underneath Grand Avenue?
It'll be a similar type of block. The larger blocks, they tend to have an appearance more of like cut stone, even though they are concrete, and people tend to like those aesthetically, although I don't know if we would use them on all our projects.
Well, between the modular wall and the lighting, we're spending $128,500 on this, and then we're gonna spend about $38,000, I believe, under Grand Avenue, and yet other bridges around town where we put recreational trails under them, they've gotten riprap.
There are times that we do use riprap. This is up against a trail where it's, riprap obviously has a particular slope that you have to lay it back on. We have to use retaining walls when we have to have a vertical cut, so whether we use riprap or retaining walls really kind of site-specific, riprap is a more, is a cheaper alternative. Does have some aesthetic issues that we sometimes, there are certain areas that we use the wall.
Thank you. I'll move 14A and B.
Six yes?
Item thirty-four is an ordinance second consideration. It's under request from Arnold DeWitt to rezone 1241 East 38th Street from R160, One Family Low Density Residential, to limited C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial to allow for expansion of existing mini warehouse complexes. Plex subject to conditions is amended to exclude the north 110 feet of lots 100, 101, 102, and 103. Mr. Moore?
Well, it's my understanding that Mr. DeWitt didn't have his final plans yet, and I'm gonna ask that unless he's got somebody here to speak on this, that it be continued? I don't, I don't see a reason, he's made the statement that unless he receives his abatement, he won't build the project, and the folks from the neighborhood, I recommended they stay home tonight, there's no reason for them to be here, and I think we ought to continue this hearing until he's got his final plans or he decides to withdraw the project.
This is only the second reading, though, so won't there be one more reading?
Well, but that'd be a one and done, and I think that it's unfair to the people of the neighborhood. Actually, if Arnie has agreed to the recommendations from the Planning Zoning Commission, and he goes ahead and builds, they were prepared to be here to support the project, but this has been going on for nine months, and I think that they were a little bit tired of attending meeting after meeting after meeting, see changes at every meeting. So I believe that until Mr. DeWitt's project is final and ready to go, we ought to continue this.
I talked to Mr. DeWitt late today, and I thought his engineer was going to be here tonight because, I guess I'll wait for them to make the comment, but I believe he's probably gonna withdraw.
You believe?
I believe he is going to. He said he's had, he's had to go through too many hassles on the project.
I thought we had agreement last time on it.
I thought we did, too.
We do. I don't know what we're even talking about. I mean, he's got it here, he's agreed to it. What's going on now?
We'll wait until his engineer or he comes in.
But the engineer was, is planning to be here so we could just come back to this item?
I would say if his engineer would show up, it'd be good to come back to it, yes.
Can we delay this, just not take it, table it for last action of the agenda or something?
Can we move to defer? Is that appropriate?
You could do it, you table the last item on the agenda if you like.
I'd rather table it and then we can come back and do it at the end of the agenda.
I'd go along with that, yeah. I think that would be, well...
All right, so we'll do that. That completes the consent agenda, with the understanding we're gonna come back to item thirty-four at the end of the, of the meeting. Takes us to item thirty-five, which is a first consideration of amendment to Chapter 114 of the municipal code submitting traffic regulation changes as follows. A is the removal of the rush hour restriction Locust Street from 13th to 15th Street, and B is the traffic control signals 11th Street and Euclid Avenue, and C is the designated handicap parking space on the north side of Woodland Avenue west of 18th Street. Council Communication Number 12-163. Is there anyone here to speak to that item? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I am Marty Ryan, 2516 Leonard Drive in Des Moines. It seems like a few years ago that I have approached the Council on something similar. As I recall, on Watson-Powell Jr. Way and 3rd Street that I used to park along every once in a while, I noticed that traffic signals were being taken down and stop signs were put up. And then I saw a few weeks later on the agenda that you were to approve that, and I said, aren't we putting the cart before the horse here? Now I see that we're doing the same thing, and that C is the traffic control signals on 11th Street and Euclid Avenue. I drive by there...
I think that's B.
B, that's B.
Is that B? Excuse me, B, yes, the traffic signal on Euclid Avenue. Thank you. I noticed that over the past, I think the past year, the street's been torn up and everything, and now we're putting traffic signals in there. They're covered up right now, and now this comes before you for approval. I thought, well, this must be part of something else. I could be embarrassing myself by saying that I don't understand this procedure, but it says previous council actions are none. There is nothing that's associated with this, and I'm just wondering, I don't have a kind way of saying, that this looks like a little bit of bureaucracy running the council, and that things are put together and then they come before you for approval. And I'm sure that somebody is gonna stand behind me and give an explanation as to why this happens in this particular process, but I would rather hear from you as to why it occurs in this way. Thank you very much.
Well, I guess we probably want Traffic and Transportation to talk on this, but it has been pursued by the Neighborhood Association. There really has some traffic jams coming up there, and they complain they can't get across Euclid, and it just is, been a real problem up for the Highland Park area.
But Mr. Mahaffey, shouldn't it be that the council approves it, and then engineering and the rest of the city goes ahead and puts this in, rather than them putting it in and you approving it? That's my question.
I think Jeb or Jennifer should speak on this, because I thought we'd had it once before, before it came to us for, before we ever set the funding up for it.
Mayor, Members of Council, Jeb Brewer, City Engineer. The item before you tonight, item thirty-five, is actually an ordinance. The project itself, to construct those signals, went through the CIP process and went through a number of neighborhood planning processes in council, actually didn't approve the installation of it. of it. We could do the ordinance change early, but it doesn't make sense to have an ordinance when you don't have the signal, because you couldn't write a ticket for someone to go through a signal that doesn't exist. So typically, our ordinance changes are done towards the end of the project. There are often times we may actually have a police order until the ordinance is updated, because the ordinance is the permanent record in which you can make citations and things like that as far as the traffic laws go. So this approval here is to get the ordinance, so that, so that there can be enforcement on this particular traffic control.
Jeb, I, I do have a question, if that's all right. I've already been asked about why the signalizations on eleventh and not twelfth, when twelfth, you know, turns into morning star.
Morning star, right.
And, and goes out and seems to be more, that...
There was, and I don't think I can give you the technical answer, but there was a, a number of neighborhood meetings on that, and where would be the best place to locate that signal, and as far as the safety concerns, I know we had some accidents up there. There was a traffic study, and, you know, we could get you those results, but it was considered, and that was thought to be a safer place. Sometimes if the neighbors, as far as allowing people to cut through even more from north on the county with the signal there, that can be more of a problem, and I think with some of the conductivity to the south, too. So we can get you that traffic report, but it was looked at, and was with the neighborhoods, worked out it's probably the best place for that signal.
I wouldn't mind looking at it. Thank you, Jeb.
Jeb, our action tonight, then, is authorizing you to activate the lights.
Essentially, this is to put the ordinance in place so that we could turn on the lights and issue tickets if people chose to run through those lights.
Thank you.
They clarified for you, Marty?
No, I really don't think it does. I mean, what if you voted no? You, you won't, but what if you voted no? What do we do with that intersection and those lights that have been installed? The neighborhood has talked about it and everything else that, that we just heard, but I'm just not understanding a process where we erect something, and then we go to the top decision-makers in the city to approve something that's already been installed. To me, it just doesn't make sense. And I've listened to what Mr. Brewer has said, and it still doesn't make sense to me that this is the process that is used to, to do things. Like I say, I've done this once before, when there was traffic signals taken down at Third and Watson-Pall Jr. Way. I've also come before this council another time, in which a speed zone was, might have been the freeway, I'm not sure, but at that time, I was told by the city attorney that we weren't going to charge anybody until the ordinance went into effect, and I said, but the signs are up. So the signs are up before you approve it. I'm, I'm not understanding, I, I understand a little bit about why the ordinance has to be passed, passed now, and that it's usually passed afterwards. Today, I just went to see if those signs were erected, the designated handicap parking space under C, and the signs on Locust from thirteenth to, from thirteenth to fifteenth. I didn't notice the signs on thirteenth to fifteenth, but, and I didn't notice that there was a handicap parking space sign on the north side of Woodland west of eighteenth. And I thought, so why are we doing some things before the ordinance is passed, and some things are not done before the ordinance is passed? This is something that I still don't understand, and like I say, I may have embarrassed myself by not understanding the procedural workings of city government, but if I'm not embarrassed, then I'm embarrassed for others. Thank you.
Marty, thank you, and let's refer to the manager and the legal and to get back to you with a clarification on it.
Thank you.
Is everybody okay with that?
That, that, that's great, and maybe when we order the construction of something, we can set the ordinance effective the date this signalization goes up, because we have voted on it before through the budget.
Through the capital improvement budget.
Then why wasn't it said that there was previous action? That's what I don't understand.
That was probably, that was probably a...
Not on the ordinance. We should probably do them both at the same time, I think is maybe the point that you're making at the end of the day.
Okay.
Well, and also even add a, a point of clarification on the blue letter that says that previous action had been ta, you know, rather than none, that previous action had been taken on the actual construction of the intersection with the lights.
I would really appreciate that. I'd, I'd rather be out gathering mushrooms right now. Thank you.
Well, we would, too, only if you share. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor and council, we will have staff prepare a report back to you on the different types of traffic control devices or parking signs that may be erected or taken down, and how those relate in timing related to construction. Obviously, installation of a traffic signal takes quite a bit more time and a lot more costs that are involved as a related, in comparison to maybe a handicap parking sign, but we will prepare a report back to you on, on the process that we go through on making that determination.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move item thirty-five, A, B, and C.
All right, been moved. Any discussion?
Seven, yes?
All right. All right, takes us to item thirty-six from councilmember Skip Moore and Hallie Grease to discuss the letter from the Drake Area Neighbors regarding the liquor license of the University Groceries at twenty-one twenty-one University Avenue, which, who would like to start? Hallie? Gerald?
And I think I'm going to open it up. I don't know, I know there's a couple speakers here that relate to this. I didn't know if any of you wanted to speak on anything before we spoke. No obligation if you don't want to.
Bill Capuccio, ten eighty-four, Twenty-Fourth Street. We met, I'm also the chair of the Drake Park Neighbors Group. We did meet with the property owner and the manager of the businesses last Friday. It was Bob Guevarre from Carpenter Neighbors and I, and along with our NVSD team and other folks from Community Development and City Legal. Thought we had a good meeting, we went over a few issues. I think that for the most part, I, I felt that the manager is doing a good job in trying to be conscientious on managing the property. We asked for a couple of adjustments on a few things. They were very accommodating, and I, I personally was very happy with the outcome.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Joe Gonzalez in charge of the NVSD unit, and just wanted to repeat some of the information. One of my officers, Janita Scarlett, who's filling in for Sergeant Malford while he's injured, that went to that meeting on Friday, and we did do a trip history, so if you wanted to, some, some of the trip history on what has happened up there at the Mar, I'd be willing to go through it with you.
Counsel?
Sure, that'd be great.
And the trip history was started, was run by, from September twenty-ninth through the eighth of, of April, and basically because that's the time that Mr. Ali took control of the property, that's when he's, since he's been running it. During that time, we have had thirty-one calls for service at the address. Nineteen of those calls have been actually initiated by his employees, so that when they see anything going on, they're the ones that are calling in, and nineteen of the thirty-one calls. There were five traffic stops in the area initiated by the officers that work the area that just happened to stop folks around that area. Two sick and cares, which is, you know, when somebody has an injury or somebody's sick, and they call for an ambulance. And for all of these, the nineteen, the five, and the two for the sick persons, they feel that the business cannot be held accountable for that one, because actually, some of those were outside their purview, and the nineteen were from actual employees that were calling in and issues associated with the property. There were three disputes on top of that, that were called in crime alert, so we're, we're not sure who called those, those in. One fight, numerous people that were out front of the business at that time, and one suspicious person, so five calls, out of all the calls, came from outside folks complaining about that. My officer that went to the meeting also expressed that there was cooperation from Mr. Ali, and that they're trying to do what, what it takes to initiate measures such as cameras and, and proactive calling from their employees whenever they see any issues. Any questions, have me?
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Lieutenant.
Bob Guevarre.
Is this the last speaker on this item, or is there anybody else intending to speak?
I forgot, excuse me, pardon me, I forgot to also mention that our watch commanders, the commanders that supervise the shifts haven't had any issues or any reports coming from the command staff, from the different shifts that work the patrol section, specifically regarding this. So there was any, there wasn't any specific complaint saying that they were having, having any issues there themselves, the patrol officers.
Okay.
Bob Guevarre, president of the Carpenter Neighborhood. I just wanted to indicate that the letter, presumably by homeowners near this business, reflects the frustration of homeowners who buy a home in a residential neighborhood, and then a few years later find themselves living next to a convenience store with the litter and noise and other problems that, that can bring on. The people concerned did not come to either the Carpenter, Drake, or Drake Park neighborhoods to, to present their renewed concerns, but I think the problem is aggravated at this present time, because the University Groceries building is being added on to, and so there, there's been grading and, and the privacy, privacy fence has been taken down for the time being. So I think this, this shows increased frustration on the part of the people living near this store. And when we had our meeting, I thought both Mr. Dasan and Ali were very amenable to the suggestions that we made to improve the situation, and hopefully the new building will be completed, I think, in July, and hopefully things will have improved by then.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. All right, let's go ahead and close this. Hallie or Skip, any thoughts?
And I just wanted to make a couple quick comments. It was alluded to, but the council and I believe others might have received an anonymous letter from a nearby resident, presumably indicating some problems that they were having with this establishment, so the neighborhood and the police were able to set up a meeting with the, with the property owners, and by all accounts, that was a very successful meeting. They're willing to work with both the police and the neighborhood to address some of the issues. I think Skip and I wanted to put it on the agenda arising out of some of the frustration that we have with other businesses, and I think we, at least with this particular business, we're moving in the right direction, and we see positive collaboration. So I'm, I'm happy with where, where we're headed on this one, but our, our police department has assured me that we'll stay diligent in monitoring this property as well.
Skip?
Yeah, after I received this letter, I checked with the city clerk's office and discovered that there was a new owner for the business there, so it kind of threw up a little bit of a red flag, and I called Hallie right away, and Hallie agreed to sponsor this along with me. Then I spoke with Bill Capuccio, and there were a few concerns, but not many. I didn't get to Bob, I apologize to you, but I'm sure that Bill got to you. I just want to say thanks to everybody for the expediency of this. Received the letter on Wednesday, and by Friday, they'd already had the meeting, made sure everything was on the up and up, and I think this will send a message to other establishments around town that, yes, we are watching, and yes, we will respond if there's an issue. In this case, it's, it's come out well, and I say thank you to the property owner, Tony, and to Ali for what, what they're doing, so.
And I'll go ahead and move, I believe, to receive and file this item.
I'll move to receive and file, I think, is, Hallie, Skip, you weren't on the council, but we debated whether or not to give this establishment a license for six weeks over three meetings, and I thought it was a mistake then. It's a bad location for a liquor license. You could have the best possible operator there, but to have a liquor license where people are naturally loitering around because of the establishments that it's connected to by nature is a bad thing for those neighborhoods, and I'm, I'm, I continue to be disappointed that we allowed that liquor license to be awarded to that location, whoever the operator is.
All right, it's five oh five, it's time to open the hearings. Come back to thirty-seven after the hearings. Item thirty-eight is on the pill of Ahmad G. Coco Ahmad, or Ahmed, thirty-eight hundred, Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, regarding a recommended denial of a tax cap license. This item was continued from March twenty-sixth, and the ask is to continue this again till April twenty-third, at the request of Mr. Ahmed, to allow him time to obtain the letter that we requested last time from United Cap. Anybody here to speak on this? Seeing no one, I guess the question is, are we going to continue it till the twenty-third?
I'll move to continue it.
Okay. Been moved?
You didn't want to?
Five, yes, one, no.
Item thirty-nine, on the two thousand eleven HUD Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPR. Anyone to speak on that? Seeing none?
I'll move.
Item thirty-nine has been moved. Any discussion? All right, item forty, on the vacation conveyance of a segment of Linden Street west of Fourteenth Street to Wellmark Holdings, Inc., in exchange for a permanent easement for Street right-ofway connecting the east terminus of the remaining Linden Street to Ingersoll Avenue. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Request for vacation.
I'll move item forty, A and B.
Been moved, any discussion? Item forty-one is on an appeal by Conlon Properties of a decision by the Historic Preservation Commission regarding replacement of windows at eight twenty-six, Eighteenth Street. A is affirming the decision to conditionally approve, or B, an alternative resolution reversing the decision to conditionally approve, or C, an alternative resolution to continue the hearing until April twenty-third at five P.M.
I'll move item forty-one, C, Mr. Conlon is requesting additional...
Time?
Time to gather information from some consultants he's working with.
Anyone in the audience to speak to this? Motion is to continue to April twenty-third. Item forty-two, on the vacation conveyance of a portion of southeast twenty-first Court and a portion of Shaw Street right-ofway adjoining six oh seven southeast twenty-first Court to an available materials handling LLC for thirty-five hundred dollars, council communication number twelve dash one sixty-two. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waivers requested by the applicant, and again, it requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item? Item third, no, item forty-two, A and B, yes?
I'll move forty-two, A and B.
Seven, yes?
Item forty-three, on the vacation conveyance of a portion of southeast nineteenth Street and Scott Avenue and Market Street to Kimmon Holdings, L.C. for thirty-five thousand five hundred and eight dollars, and Waste Management of Iowa, Inc. for forty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars, council communication number twelve dash one fifty-eight. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the city engineer and Kimmon Industries, Inc., and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item?
Move forty-three, A and B.
It's been moved, any discussion? Seeing none?
Seven, yes?
All right, takes us to item forty-four. Item forty-four is on the conveyance of city-owned property north of three thousand Vandelia Road to the Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item? Forty-four, seeing none?
Going for the...
Going for the turkey. I'll do forty-four. Move it. It's a bowling term if you're not familiar with it.
It's a bowling term, all right. I thought it was Thanksgiving.
Seven yes.
All right. Seven oh, item forty-five on the conveyance of excess city-owned property at eight twelve Indian, Indiana Avenue to Sean D. Wagner for fifty dollars. Council Communication number twelve dash one fifty-six. Anybody to speak on this item? Item forty-five. Seeing none, could we have a motion? Eight twelve Indiana.
I'll move forty-five.
Forty-six on the request from F&amp;J Mobile Homes to rezone property at seventy-six fifty-seven U.S. Highway sixty-nine from limited C-two general retail and highway-oriented commercial to R-five mobile home residential to M-one light industrial to allow for an outdoor storage of recreational vehicles by the general public. Planning and zoning commission recommends denial and the row call contains an alternative set of motions. All right, seventy-six fifty-seven. Yes, sir.
Mayor County and members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. Subject property, just for reference, is located on the north side of Southridge Boulevard. The Southridge Mall would just be to the north and west of this property. Bloomfield Road ties in with Southridge Boulevard and just to the south here. This is the existing mobile home park in this location and this is their existing storage facility for RVs that is limited, the use of this is limited to residents of the mobile home park. They have been cited in the past for a violation of that permit to, to store vehicles only by the residents. There, they had actually RVs stored from some commercial entities along Southeast Fourteenth at, at one time and were cited for that. I do have some photos, several photos of the site from Southeast Fourteenth Street to give you a view of that. They, they did make improvements to the site for the storage of vehicles by the residents. This is probably, this is looking from, looking kind of to the west, I guess, there's along Southridge Boulevard at the site and also the view from Southridge Boulevard. I, this is the consent map was received. Obviously, the, the majority of, of the green area is the adjoining mobile home park residence. The staff concern and the planning and zoning commission's concern was, was primarily just the expansion of the use on the property. Concern of visibility from Southridge Boulevard, it is a major gateway into Des Moines and there were concerns about that. Ultimately, the planning commission recommended eight two for denial of the request. The applicant had presented a proposal where they would increase landscaping along Southridge Boulevard to help mitigate the view of, of the, of the facility, but the planning commission ultimately did recommend denial of that. If the council denies the rezoning, the applicant could seek a use variance from the zoning board of adjustment as an option, but at this point, the staff is recommending denial of the rezoning. I'm available if you have any questions.
If there's no discussion, I'll move to, move to deny.
Uphold the recommendation?
Move to deny by upholding the recommendation. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council?
Yes, go ahead.
Sure.
For the applicant.
My name's Jim Nervig. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Brick Gentry in West Des Moines. And I have all along represented F&amp;J Mobile Home Park in this rezoning request. I have with me Vince Pagentini, the engineer for the owner, and the principal for the owner, George Jordan. And they might speak after me to the, the issue at hand, in particular the landscaping plan. The thing, the thing that we really want to, to emphasize is it's somewhat unclear from the agenda item, seeking an M-one rezoning, that this isn't a, this isn't a traditional M-one rezoning. This is essentially a single-use rezoning. What we have is the right to store the recreational vehicles that are on the lot now with respect to the residents of the park, but it isn't economically feasible. There aren't enough recreational vehicles for residents of the park to maintain this lot. It's a surfaced lot, to do all the things necessary in, in the way of upkeep without having the ability to rent to non-park individual owners from all over the metro area. And we are servicing that, that demand for outdoor storage of recreational vehicles throughout the metropolitan area. And that is absolutely all we're asking for in this, I think it's referred to in the agenda item as a limited M-one rezoning. We're calling, we call it a conditional zoning. It would be conditioned on only one M-one use and that would be the use for parking of recreational vehicles of, of non-residents of the park. Our position is, yes, this is, this is the gateway for East Fourteenth into the city of Des Moines, but, you know, with all of the hurdles to redevelopment of the area that are in place now, not the least of which is, are the financial hurdles that the city's going through right now, it, it's very clear that this area isn't going to develop immediately. And when it does develop, you know, certainly this particular small lot off of the main lot is going to develop to a higher and better use along with the main property. And what we're asking for now is the ability to take this lot, which really doesn't have any beneficial use right now other than for use in connection with parking of these vehicles, and allow us to continue to do that and, you know, give us the ability to make a reasonable return off of our property. And having said that, I think it's important to recognize that if we can't use our property and it goes to weeds, you know, what, what kind of an alternative is that to a nicely landscaped area? And I'm, I'm going to call Vince up in just a second to show you the landscaping plan because we feel that this was something that the planning and zoning commission at an earlier hearing had specifically asked us to do, to come back and show them how we could take the site and make it as attractive as possible. And I would, I would submit our plan makes it as attractive as possible. And again, given the nature of the site, it isn't going to develop for any other, you know, higher, better use in the near future. And allow the property owner to make a reasonable return in the interim period and at the same time make the, the site as attractive as it can possibly be. Now, if I may, I'll ask Vince Pagentini to present the site plan and address the landscaping.
Vince Pagentini, Associated Engineering Company of Iowa. This is the current site plan that we've submitted.